This time, I think we have, you know, we're now to the transition of environmental management legacy cleanup at Lannell portion of the meeting. We have Jack Craig's here from our, he said, Washington as well as Cincinnati office? Is that right, Jack? Okay. Business center, so he, I'll leave it up to Jack to inform us about what's going on with DOE and the transition cleanup at Lannell. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Doug. We, this Department of Energy was part of our outreach on the transition activities, briefed congressional delegation staff last week and also together his office and Mr. Flynn last week. There was a press availability session, which we also had, I believe it was on the second or third last week. And so this is an opportunity that Pete suggested we come to this meeting and also relay to your plans and hear your feedback on that, so we can factor that into our path forward. A little bit of background, because some of this you've already either seen of or heard of in the press, but the secretary made a decision in mid-November to transition the EM legacy cleanup work from the current contract that they had, which is being executed on the NSA contract at Los Alamos, to a separate standalone EM contract. Simply, the EM work at the field offices was done by an EM standalone prime contract reporting to EM. So the secretary just been working within NSA and EM. We developed a plan to do that. We presented to the secretary and he approved that in November. So we kind of kicked off the public part of that last week and continue that early through next month or so.
I'll talk a little bit about, you know, the contract process and the public involvement process in a second. But when the secretary was, made a decision on the transition, it was really to transition two items. One was the, how the work, the federal oversight of the work at Los Alamos and also the kind of how we execute the work through a contract. So there were really two parts to the transition. I'll talk a little bit first about the federal transit, the federal oversight. What the path we're on is that we're going to transition the oversight of the EM legacy work from NSA oversight or managed work to a standalone EM office at Los Alamos. And this is, once again, how it's routinely done at other field offices. We went through the similar process of organizational transition at Oak Ridge about four years ago and Savannah River about eight years ago. So at those two sites, they're standalone organizations. They have an NSA overseeing the NSA work, EM overseeing the EM work, and in some cases, Science is overseeing their own laboratory work at those sites. So the plan is that to do this in two phases. We're going to try to do one initial phase, which we hope to have done in January of next year, and that's to do a transition, set up an office there which will have a manager reporting to Mark Whitney, who's the Assistant Secretary for EM, and he will be a peer. Every other field office has managers reporting to Mark Whitney. This will be a new position here at Los Alamos. And we initially want to stand that up with about 26 federal employees. Today, EM funds, the EM program funds 22 of those FTEs that are doing oversight today and a couple others, and those all report up through NSA to Kim. And we're going to transition that to a new manager at Los Alamos for the EM work. And once again, that'll be done, hopefully, by January. That'll entail a couple things. We're going to transfer 22 positions that are currently funded by EM. We're establishing four new positions there. One will be a Senior Executive Service Manager, a Deputy Manager, a Contracting Officer, and a Regulatory Specialist. So there'll be a total of 26 people in that office initially. Once again, hope to have that done by January. And then over the next year, after that office is established, we're going to do a more detailed workforce analysis to just ensure ourselves that those are the right skills and the right people in that office, and it may, may result in additional people being added. So there's a short-term establishment in January and a more detailed analysis and hopefully finalization of the organization by December of next year. That reorganization package has to be approved by the secretary. He's initially said that's the way to go. We're sending the detailed organization up through the system now for his approval. And once again, hopefully, that'll be approved and we can provide some more information publicly on that in January. So that's kind of the federal oversight transition, which, which is how we oversee the work, which is a change from what it is today. On the contract transition, which has really been the, kind of the source of most discussion up to this point, once again, the decision was made to transition the, the contract work from NSA contract, which it is today, to a standalone EM prime contract. And once again, this is, this is how it's done for all the major EM sites across the country and all the major EM projects. And once again, we're looking at doing that in two phases. One, well typically, typically these procurements, and we're looking at eventually to have a long-term competitive procurement for the EM legacy work at Los Alamos. Typically, those procurements in the, in the department take about 18 months. And the reason they take 18 months is because we have a very open process where we, we issue draft RFPs, we get public comment on the RFPs, we address the comments. Actually, sometimes we have two rounds of draft RFPs. The RFPs are issued. Contractors typically have about 60 to 90 days to prepare bids for those contracts, and then we typically take three to four months to evaluate the bids and make a selection. So it's a, it's typically about an 18-month process. We'd like to do this kind of in two phases, and I'll point you to, I think, one of the handouts that was on the table maybe at everybody. This is a synopsis of the plan for how we're going to do the, the transition. And the idea is that we are going to do a, a short-term, what we call a bridge contract with the current lands contractor at Los Alamos, separate the EM work as a standalone EM prime contract, separate from the MNO, so we'd be breaking out those activities and negotiating a, a short-term bridge contract with Lands, the current contractor. And while, so that would be for up to an 18-month period. And while they're executing that work, we would be doing the planning and the solicitation and the, the RFP for the new standalone five-year, typically a five-year prime DOE contract. We've, so we've already kicked off some of the long-term work. There's a lot of planning that goes into the long-term. And we, we're, the document that's, that's out right now for, for industry comment is what's called a synopsis. It's really our intent to do this sole source with, with the current contractor for the bridge contract. We have to, there's a 15-month, or 15-day comment period for industry, and industry can provide comments during that period if, if, if they take objection or if, if industry believes they could do a better job than their, than the proposed solution. We would take all those comments and then at the end of, probably in the end of December, early January, we would make a decision whether we were going to go forward with this Lands sole-source bridge contract or do something different. At that time, if, if we proceed, we'll be negotiating with Lands on what that contract looks like. We'd be breaking out that work from the, the current management and operating contractor under NSA, and it would be a standalone EM contract managed by EM. So if you, once again, if you look at the back page of this document, there are, there's a point of contact with, if you have questions, comments, concerns. Karen Boyd is the contracting officer. She actually works in my real office, which is in Cincinnati, Ohio, and she'll be the one addressing those comments. And so, so that's a little bit on the, the short term, a little bit more on the longer One of the other things we're, we're intending to do is, I think it actually will be announced today, to support Pete and, and Kim, we're looking at getting a small business support contractor to help us scope this longer-term contract. And once again, one of the challenges we have when we're issuing a, a five-year multimillion-dollar contract is making sure we have the right scope in it, the right contract clauses. So we're actually going to get a small business to help us do that. That's, we're actually going to be issuing what's called a sources sought, where business, small businesses can provide their capability to do that. And that will be issued today, and I'm not positive how, how, how long that'll be open, but that's another thing we're doing to help with the long-term and helping us scope this work, so we can ensure we have the right scope and clauses in the long-term contract. Little process-wise, once again, we'll be developing a draft request for proposals, and that would probably be issued in the summer of next year. Those, those drafts are, well, we're actually right in the middle of that at Idaho right now. We're going through the same process at Idaho and the recompete of their contract. And so if you're interested in how that works, there's a, there's a webpage on the CBC, the CBC website that talks about the process. But once again, it entails a draft RFP. We take comments on that from industry and the public. We address the comments. We actually post all the comments and post our responses to those. And then eventually, we come out with a final RFP, which industry is able to bid on. And once again, typically, these are five-year contracts, and it'll be a little bit, I believe it'll be a little bit different contract arrangement than the current contracts at Lannell. It will not be a management and operating contract. It'll be a different type of contract. And once again, exactly how the contract type works out will be part of the, the comment resolution process. So one other thing we're doing with, with Kim and, and our NSA staff at headquarters is we know that during this transition period, that the bridge contract and then eventually for the, the new EM contract, there's a lot of different interfaces we're going to have with the ongoing operations between NSA and EM. So we're also developing a, an MOU with, with, between NSA and EM to spell out those kind of things that are going to have to be supported by the lab, continuing with the current contractor. An example of that is security. We don't intend to, for EM to establish our own security office or security procedures. We rely on the lab to continue to do that. And there are a lot of other things that make sense in that area that we don't create another system to do that when we can utilize the lab for those support activities. So we'll also be working with Kim and her staff over the next few months to, to further define those. Once again, this is, this is our outreach to the, the community here. This is kind of the, the last step, I think, before we, we finalize the synopsis comment period. And once again, we're, we're interested in your comments, interested in your ideas, and that's really all I have.
Okay. I think we'll open up to questions, but I guess the, the comment period goes to when, Jack?
It was 15 days from when it was issued last Wednesday.
Okay. So last Wednesday was the third?
Yes.
So up till the 18th, is that my understanding?
Yes, I think that's correct.
So up to the 18th, you'd have, that would be the comment period. Okay. And I guess we could open it up to questions at this point from the board, and I see that there seems to be a number of them. One question before, I have, each year on this contract, do you see, because it, it does depend on the budget that comes down from Congress for EM work, so is each year that the contractor has, is somewhat renegotiated as far as what the work, you know, would entail and how much it would be? Is that correct?
Not, not really. We, typically, we would, we would estimate for the five-year period, our best estimate at that time, what our five-year budget looks like. And that would be the estimated cost of the contract during that term. Each year, we would negotiate what's called a work plan or a fee plan.
Okay.
So it would, they're, the, the work we want to accomplish in that specific year would be negotiated within the contract, and we would kind of focus their fee elements on the, on the items that would happen in that year. But it is, you're right, they could, the, the scope could change based on the budget, and sometimes the scope that we initially thought was going to be accomplished in five years because of the budget can't be, and it goes six years. And sometimes we have to extend contracts for that in those cases. But the contract isn't renegotiated every year, but we do negotiate a fee plan every year.
Fee plan, okay. I guess we'll start with questions. We'll start over here on the right with Carlos, that's agreed. Usually have some good in-depth questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jack, thank you for joining us. NSA staff in Los Alamos now, how many people on NSA staff are working with cleanup efforts now? And what's going to happen to them? Are they going to transition over to EM? Is anybody going to lose a job?
I'm not sure. I'll let Kim answer about the specific people, but I know that from what I understand, 22 of the current positions are funded by EM. We envision those 22 becoming part of this new organization. We don't see any, anybody losing their job as a result of this transition. Now, we, we do believe that we're going to require more than 22. That's why I said initially, we think it's going to be 26, because we're establishing four new positions. But as far as, and there may be some other people that are doing part-time EM work. I'll let Kim address that.
Okay. So right now, we have 77 NSA positions, and we also have the 22 EM positions. So that's 99 right now at the Los Alamos field office. So what we're, you know, what Jack is talking about is we're going to take those 22, have them report up to EM, and then add the four positions that they look at now. So there are a couple of cases where we have people working on, like, we have people who work in the facilities. We call them facility reps, and it's possible they can be looking at NSA work and EM work. So we're going to develop a memorandum of understanding to make sure that, you know, we have, you know, the EM work scope clearly defined with the feds defined and the NSA work scope that remains. So right now, they, as he said, right now, they report to me, and this will put them reporting up through the EM chain.
I see. Thank you. Thank you, Kim. Guns, guards, and gates, budget-wise, how is that going to be handled? I know that NSA probably had the majority of funding for that. Does that get transferred over? Is there some sort of crosswalk that's available that shows what's moving from NSA to EM?
Not yet, but I, I think that's, that's one of the things we'll have to discuss in the MOU. I mean, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kim, some of those things, like security, EM pays a portion of that today through an overhead account. So, so part of the overhead we pay to the lab covers things like security and other support activities. Those will probably continue. I don't know what the rate is today, but we, we pay for our portion of the security cost today.
Right.
The majority is paid by NSA because the majority of the work is NSA work, but we do pay a portion of it.
Right. So the security is over $100 million, but we will continue to charge EM for their piece of, in this case, the protection strategy. So we'll, we'll be able to work through all of, all of those type issues, and as Jack said, we, we have this model at other sites in the complex, so we just need to develop our, our memorandum of understanding and work through the touchpoints and properly account for it.
We're in fiscal year '15, right, currently, right?
Yes.
And so how does budget transfers happen or how do expenditures happen? Do they still go into two separate funds? Is there a crosswalk? And what happens to the FY '16 budget? Because I'm sure that's already been requested under both separate pots of money, and it's too late to merge those two together now at this point. I'm sure for '17, it's probably going to be requested as a EM-funded project, but...
I don't think, I don't think the budget process will change that much. We, we today request the funding for EM activities at Lannell separately from NSA. It's just that it was executed today by the current contract, the NSA contract. So we're still going to request the budget, I think, the same way we do it today. It's just going to be, it's going to be executed differently by a different contract type. And once again, we're just into '15, I think, I don't know if you've seen the same articles I have in the paper. We don't yet have a '15 budget, and they're working on it hopefully this week to finalize that. And we, hopefully, will know more by the end of the week, but...
If I may, Mr. Chair.
You can continue.
You said in phase two, or phase one and two should take approximately 18 months before we're back to full operations and cleanup efforts? That puts us well behind the consent order deadline. Has there been any conversations with the New Mexico Environment Department as to re-establishing milestones, deadlines, or framework?
I don't, maybe I misspoke, but I, what I was talking about was not the execution of the work and the pace of the work to full operations. Really, what I was talking about was having a new contract in place within 18 months. I mean, Pete and Kim probably are a better source of information of, of the actual work onsite and when, where they're at in the activities for restart and things like that. But in any case, what I'm, what I'm talking about is just the contract to do the work, not where they're at in the work execution today. So...
Is that it? Carlos? Thank you.
I'm going to wait a while.
Okay. You'll have some more. Steve, why don't we, go to you since we'll kind of rotate clockwise around the table.
Yeah. You talked about the reorganization on the DOE side, but you didn't say anything about your expectations for how Lands would operate, which has presumably this contract. The EM, the cleanup part is about $200 million per AM, and I think the total budget is over $2 billion per year. So it would seem like the cleanup part might basically just be a kind of small division of the larger organization. And so, and what steps are you taking to ensure that this new operation actually is an independent contractor operating and not just a subdivision of this big contract?
I agree with you. I mean, we do, unfortunately, we haven't got that far yet.
There's some left one.
I'm sorry. So certainly is one of the, the items we're going to have to discuss as part of our negotiations with Lands to make sure that we, we understand and have confidence in the organization they put in place to manage this new contract. We haven't been able to have those discussions with Lands yet because we have to get through the process of this, this contracting process of the public comment period for the synopsis. And we hope to have those discussions with Lands in early January. But you're right, we have to convince ourselves that they have the right people, the right organization, the right processes to do the work within this bridge contract and both from the EM side and then Kim from the NSA side to understand better how it's going to be working differently and better.
Is there anything else? Steve? Okay. I think we'll rotate to Allison, if you're next on the question list.
No, just a few. Hi, Jack. Thank you for being here. I'm interested in the efficiencies that are envisioned or expected. One area would come through a specialized contractor and the other through integration. If you could start with integration, it's hard for me to see comparatively how the work gets done in an integrated way with NSA and Lands and then gets disintegrated to then be reintegrated with EM's structure. And so trying to compare the hypothetical future with the status quo, what kinds of efficiencies on the new integration are predicted?
A couple things. We're talking about the bridge contract first or the long-term contract?
Both.
Okay. Well, for both, we, we believe that having a standalone organization with, with EM oversight will help provide focus to the EM work. Once again, as somebody mentioned, the Lands work, the Lands contract is a high 2-point-something billion-dollar contract. And so the majority of the work, a large majority of the work is not EM-related. And so we want to, we want to structure this where the people working on this are focused on the EM work, report up to EM, and we can structure the incentives for those works the way EM typically does in other contracts, to focus on EM work. I'm not going to make any judgments about Lands, but when, when a contractor has a large majority of their fee riding on other activities other than EM, they may lose some focus. So we want to focus that through the EM contract with EM oversight. Acknowledge that in the short term, it might be, we might not gain as many efficiencies because you're right, we were using many, some of the same people, and we're going to have a lot of integration issues over the next 18 months, but we thought it was worth it to, to start this in the bridge contract to get to the 18-month full, full five-year contract, where we know we can get a specialized contractor that's, that has, has the processes and procedures. One of the things we look at as part of our procurement process is past performance in EM work. And so we will have the ability to select contractors that are both knowledgeable and have a good track record in environmental management work.
Okay. And that really leads to my other question, which is really just a bit of a primer on types of contracts. You mentioned it probably won't be a management and operation style contract moving forward. So what might be some other flavors of contracts that could be considered?
We, we have used things called cost-plus incentive-fee contracts, where contractors actually give us what's called a target cost for the work, and they earn a fee based on how well they do against the target cost. So this is really focused on, on the cost performance. We also have things called cost-plus-award-fee contracts, where we can structure their, their fee and incentives on schedule and different, different other milestones. It's more milestone-related fee. They're, they're not, and some of them are cost-reimbursable, meaning that the contractor under an MNO gets all their costs reimbursed, and then they earn a fee on top of that. Some of these other contract types require the contractors to pay the cost out of their own, you know, they, they go get letters of credit on their own, and then we reimburse them as they invoice us. So basically, their, their money's on the line, and they get, get invoiced, get reimbursed every month. So there's a lot different, much different, there are many different contract types. We haven't settled on one yet, but we've been successful. I, you know, I was involved in the Fernal cleanup. That was a cost-plus-incentive-fee contract where we had a target cost and a target schedule. Rocky Flats was the same way. It was a cost-plus-incentive-fee contract. Those are typically used when you know you have a definitive endpoint. I don't know enough about the work here and the schedule of it to know that we have that here yet.
Okay.
But there, there are a number of types we could, we're looking into.
Thank you.
Just a question, turn to that. You'll have a performance evaluation annually on these contracts and assessment? Is, is that the understanding?
Yeah. I think the, the...
So we current, we currently do in our MNO management and operating contract.
Okay. But in this new...
Could be a cost-plus-award-fee contract where they actually, there's a, there's actually a yearly evaluation done. That's one model. The cost-plus-incentive-fee contract, there is no annual evaluation. Once again, they're evaluated based on their target cost of the total contract and their target schedule. So how well they do against that long-term cost and long-term schedule is how they earn their fee.
Okay. And within that, there would also be a liability and penalty clause, is that for this?
Sure.
Okay. If things don't develop correctly. Let's go on to Nona.
I wanted to ask, is it likely or even possible that Lannell, I mean, that Lands or one of its component companies might end up as the long-term EM contractor? And also, what about the subcontractors that are the people actually doing the cleanup work on the ground? And then also, how does the transition... And then also, how does the transition from one to another and then possibly a third setup impact the amount of work that's actually getting done during these transition periods?
Okay, the work, the actual work scope won't change. So whatever the work scope is agreed to with, between Pete and the state and whatever's in place today, we're not altering the work scope. So the priorities and the commitments that have been made, that isn't being altered by the change in contract. Whether or not lands can bid on this, maybe Kim knows the answer to this, but I don't believe lands, as the current arrangement that they have with their teaming partners, are allowed to bid on other work as that entity, as long as they have the contract at Lanal. I would believe, and I would believe that some of their teaming partners, and I don't know who all the teaming partners are, let's just say, I think Bechtel's one of them.
Yes.
Bechtel may be able with, as part of a new team, to bid on the long-term contract. But that's all part of the scoping of this and that'll be decided through the, once again, the draft RFP and the question and answers as part of that. Was there another part to your question?
Might they end up with the same subcontractors who are the actual.
Right.
Or two of your hands on the work?
I would say for the bridge contract, I don't envision any changes to the current, I mean, once again, those subcontracts are a decision lands made. And if lands decides to keep those contractors, that's, I think that'll be up to them. In the long term, it'll be some new type of arrangement. We'll have, once again, we'll have teams arranging and bidding on this that are somewhat different than the arrangement today. They will have teaming partners and they will, some of them have embedded subcontractors. So I would envision it being a little bit different in the long term, but that'll all be part of how these teams get set up.
Nona, are there other questions? Okay, we'll proceed with Manuel for questions. Thank you.
So, Jack, the project bridge contract, would you see that somewhat as a pilot program?
I don't know that we've done it like this before ever. So yeah, I would, it's somewhat of a pilot, but so I guess you can consider it that, yes.
Okay, and then, so while this is, this program, or contract rather, is being implemented after the first of the year, at this time, would then the Office of Environmental Management Consolidated Business Center start to solicit proposals?
For the longer term?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, this is more of a technical question, I guess, kind of a housekeeping question. Would then it be advertised on BizOps?
It would.
And along with the SAM?
I'm sorry, what was the second part?
SAM system for awards management?
I don't, I'm not familiar with that, but we, there is an established process that we use and I think it involves at least two different federal procurement websites. But we're, if, give me some more information on that later, I can check into that for you.
And then, okay, so then, I was looking also on the classification code DF108. That would fall, I guess, under the NAICS then, correct?
I'm not, I'm not the person to answer that.
Okay. Thank you, Jack.
But Karen can answer your question.
Okay.
Karen.
Is that, okay. I see where Alex would like to ask some questions. Turn it over to you, Alex.
Just so I'm clear on this, you talked about 99 positions in total being transferred to this, no, okay.
Twenty-two of the 99.
Twenty-two of the 99.
Currently, there's 99, so 22 of those would transfer over.
And the other 77 are, are those environmental protection, are those the environmental programs like permitting, compliance, surveillance?
No, those are NNSA positions.
And so.
National Nuclear Security Administration positions, federal positions.
Are we looking at a reintegration of some of the other environmental programs back with the environmental management program, like hazardous waste permitting, Clean Water Act compliance, or are those going to be kept separate?
Well, I don't want to answer this for Kim, but I'll give you at least what I envision happening. All of those programs are going to have some element, not all of them, most of those programs are going to have some element of EM, but they also are going to continue to have some element for NNSA because they have an ongoing mission.
Yes.
Their mission requires permit compliance, regulatory oversight, Kim mentioned facility reps, they have, her staff is out in the facilities watching operations. So some of that will continue as part of her 77 or so people. A lot of it will also be part of the new organization, the responsibility of the new organization for the legacy EM work that's going to be ongoing. So I think it's, for those positions, you're going to have both, really.
So some will be transferred in support of the EM work?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Carlos has another question, I see. Carlos?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jack, does the reason for transferring the cleanup efforts from NNSA to EM, does that have anything to do with what happened at WIP in February? And how is, how is this transition going to affect the WIP recovery?
I wouldn't say this was, that the WIP event was the main reason, driver for this. Like I said earlier, the transition to a separate standalone EM contract and organization has happened at just about every other DOE office. I know it's been looked at at Lanal before and I think the events probably accelerated that, but it was, it was always being discussed. And once again, it's, it's part of how EM, or how the department really has transitioned these multi-program sites to be, once again, to focus on their mission. So I think it probably accelerated it, but probably wasn't the main driver.
What kind of quality assurances will the new contract have so that we don't have another type of incident like February? If any.
Well, I don't, we haven't, we don't have the new contract yet, but there's a couple of things that we'll certainly address. One is we're evaluating the compliance order we got from the state, so our response to that and what other actions we have to take to be responsive to those, to the compliance order will be factored into our, both the bridge and the long-term contract. But we also, I don't know how, what discussions have taken place about other investigations that have been ongoing by the department. There's two other independent investigations that have been ongoing about the events at WIP. We have a first phase of an accident investigation report which had numerous findings in it. All those, to address those findings, we will be putting controls in place. We also, I think within the next month, we'll have the second phase of that accident investigation public and we will also have to put things in place to address those findings. So I think our goal is to make sure we're addressing all of them, both with our organizational changes and with our contract changes.
So before this incident happened, we were getting ready to roll out a campaign approach to the next step in cleanup. So what happens to that now? Obviously, everything's on hold, focus is on WIP recovery. Does everything go back to square one?
I'll let Pete handle that one.
Mr. Chairman, Carlos, I don't think everything goes back to square one. We're still very much focused, for example, on the chromium groundwater remediation project. That's, that's our number one priority right now and I believe that we're in alignment with the Environment Department on that priority. But it would be premature to say that the campaign program will continue as we originally envisioned without, without having input from the Environment Department. I believe in the past that Secretary Flynn had, had supported that overall vision, but that would, from my perspective, probably need to be folded into any new consent order that would be negotiated and we haven't even begun those discussions yet.
Is, Mr. Chair, Ryan's not here, but is anybody from Environment not coming today?
Carlos, my understanding from discussions that I don't know that anybody's going to come from NMED today. That was forwarded us. They had a major sickness in that office and the whole office and they bowed out for trying to attend the meeting today. So we'll have to wait till January, I guess, to ask those questions.
I guess one final for, for Jack, if I may. $54 million. I haven't seen a final like that in a state applying to the federal government, I think, ever in my lifetime. That's huge. Where is that money going to come from and is that going to jeopardize cleanup efforts?
I'm not, I'm not sure I have a good answer for that at this point. We, the department has, once again, just got the administrative order on Saturday, last Saturday, I believe. And we have a 30-day period to evaluate it and respond, so we're just in the middle of understanding all of the numerous findings that were in the order, preparing responses to that and then looking forward to sitting down with the state and discussing it. How we fund that and what the ultimate number is, I don't have an answer to that today.
Thank you, Jack.
Anything else? We'll go to the side of the table now, let's go back to Nona for her questions.
I had hoped to ask this of Secretary Flynn, but, and I don't know if anyone who is here would know the answer, but what does the state then do with the money it gets from the fines? How is that money spent? Does it go into the regular state budget, into the Environmental Department budget, or what it's done with it?
I don't know that we have anybody here to definitively answer that question for you, so we'll have to wait on that question also. But we can probably take it up at the next meeting in January. Manuel?
Mr. Chair. I believe the money goes to the general fund, but one point of, I guess. How's that?
Is it green light on?
I'll just keep it held.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I've noticed that there's been a lot of questions and I'll broach this with you and Mr. Bishop, a lot of questions in regards to the procurement side. Would it be within our charter to request maybe a quick presentation, not today, but say on a coter, contracting officer, technical representative, a writer, as to what goes on with performance-based contracts?
So Manuel, certainly that would be a subject for maybe a combined committee meeting to give you a little prep course on different kind of federal contracting. There's really just a handful we'd be looking at as we get closer and get more definitive on how we'll approach this procurement. I think it'd be very appropriate to brief the cab exactly on what the plans forward for that contractor would be, what it would look like, what the contract would look like, what the fee structure would look like. So I think it's extremely appropriate that we go ahead and schedule that, probably early in the first quarter is what I would think we'd be ready to discuss that.
Just to let you know, Manuel, it's a good question. When we were in Idaho Falls, there was a whole discussion on the types of contracts that DOE does do and, you know, we talked about the MNO contract and then the traditional type contract and, you know, fee-based, but I think it would be good so we understand that and better that the board, you know, gets a presentation, because it was a good presentation in Idaho Falls about that, so it's appreciated. Any other question?
No, I just thank you, Mr. Chair, and again, like I said, because it's been at the forefront, I know that one of the biggest questions is like, okay, well, you know, this entity is getting X amount of dollars for performance, although they, there was a flub up, what gives? Some folks don't realize that there's other items here in play, so, you know, I thought it'd make for a great presentation.
Very good. Thank you. Gerard?
Jack, thank you for being here, for answering our questions, taking the time to be here. I want a little bit more clarity, the number of, we talked about the 99 employees, 22 moving over, what are the contractors that we have, do we have supporting the current contract and number of employees involved that are not federal employees?
So I'll let Peter, Kim answer this, but typically on these large DOE sites, you'll have what's called the prime contractor. In this case, it's lands doing, doing the NNSA work and the EM work today. They have their own incumbent workforce. So that's, then they have subcontractors who do subcontract work for the prime contractor. You may even have subs to subs, but so there's, there's those two universes of people. You have the federal employees and then typically the federal employees or the federal organizations have support contractors helping them do certain activities. So the only thing I know today is we have the 99 feds who are working for Kim today. Kim or Pete can probably tell you if they have an estimate of the breakout of the other people, of the other groups of people.
So in our federal office, we have another small contract and I think there's five people on that contract.
And in the Environmental Projects Office, we have a subcontract with a firm called Project Time and Cost. They are utilized in various capacities throughout the DOE complex and I have about 12 or 13 people from PTNC supporting me primarily in, in project management-related functions, project controls, baseline development, things like that. They don't really go out in the site and, and monitor the contract in the field. They're primarily monitoring performance through earned value management techniques and other project controls activities.
And the five on the NNSA side are administrative personnel.
Was your question about the contractors, the prime contract also?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to know the, again, we know that the 99, 22 moving over, what other contractors are out there that this affects and number of employees?
I think this, the federal trans, the federal transition, that is the universe of who's impacted. It's the 99 feds, it's the two support contractors that just.
Okay. Thank you.
Gerard, anything else? Okay, thank you. We'll step over to this side of the table. Bonnie?
First of all, I'd like to thank you both for being here. It's great. Very disappointed that Ryan Flynn's office is not represented here today. And I'd like to thank everybody out here, those of you who are in the members of the public. I think it's a really important subject matter we're all here for. That being said, I'd like to ask each of you, and, you know, it's obvious that each of you are very concerned about the situation we're all talking about, but how do you see, moving forward, how can we think outside the box regarding human error? Because that's really what we're talking about. I mean, I mean, let's face it, there's human error in each of us when we drive or do anything. So when we're involving something so important as nuclear energy, nuclear waste, moving forward, this is your first time doing such a thing, you said, Jack, so I'm wondering how you guys can incorporate a way to work together, even that you haven't thought of already, that would really, really thread the subject of human error down to the base, basis of employees working hands-on? And I'm sure you're doing that already, but obviously, we're, as a humanity, we're growing. How can we think outside the box and work together because there's been so much finger pointing and blame? And let's face it, it's been in the news quite a lot. So I think, you know, it's kind of the elephant in the room, there's so much blame. We're all sitting here, we all live on this planet, how can we figure it out? You know? And if there's any way, there can be certain people who could bridge, bridge talking or, or mediations between the groups, do you guys have that? Or, you know, so just, I don't, you don't have to answer now, but I just think it's very important, Pete, Jack, you know, Kim, all of us, to think about that.
I could go ahead and say this. Of course, Mr. Strobel, who's visited with us on many occasions, is in the room from the Carlsbad office. Thanks for attending, JR, and my supervisor, Dave Nicholas, with the True Waste Program. At the working level, we've already integrated with Carlsbad office and we've started monthly meetings with the Carlsbad office to look. meetings with the Carlsbad office to look at work processes and relook at how we structured the True Waste Program, and they have some indication of what some of these reports are going to have as far as corrective actions, as do we. And we're already working together to go ahead and move towards more of a check and balance issue, especially with the, the transuranic waste, working with the central characterization program, having them look at our procedures, we're looking at their procedures, have more of approval, but really a truly a, a check and balance type of situation. So, that's already instituted before even these contracts have been started, and the transition, we, we recognized that was a weakness, and working with Randy Erickson's group, we're, we're working to that. So, we're looking over each other's shoulders at this point as we restart to ensure that this doesn't happen again.
I'd, I'd like to add, too, that as, as Jack said earlier, we, the department tasked an accident investigation ward to look at what happened, and we have seen some of their early reports, but they're in the final stages, I think, of doing, issuing their report. So, that group does a very comprehensive look, they're external eyes, looking at the people, processes, and procedures, and we will take those recommendations and, and completely scrub them and work through the corrective action process when we get that report.
I, I want to also say that I can tell that there has been a huge, you know, investigation, and, and I appreciate what you're saying, Kim. And, you know, Lee, from anything Lee's ever reported to us, the check and balance system has been so thorough, which is why I bring it up right now, because I think, you know, we live in a liability-run country. Everybody's afraid of liability. So, you know, everybody looking over each other's shoulders is good, and it's very important, but how can, how can it be easier for us to admit mistakes or see a mistake coming and not face job loss or whatever, anyway?
Thank you, Bonnie. Steve?
Yeah, and, on the surface, it sounds like a really neat split between EM and, and NSA, but it seems to me it's kind of a follow-up on Alex's question. There are a lot of issues that really cross over between these two, like EM is looking at legacy waste, but NSA, NNSA has a lot of ongoing operations that produce waste. And so, in a way, you're kind of splitting this up, but at the same time, you still need to have some kind of collaboration between these two operations so that all the waste that comes from Los Alamos is managed in a safe and responsible manner. And I guess, I wonder if either of you could elaborate at all, kind of how you see that eventually being worked out?
I think, I think it will certainly be worked through our MOU. I know Kim and, Kim and Pete and, and myself and others are accountable for this. We're part of a steering committee to make sure this transition is successful. We're not, we're not announcing this and then going away. So, myself and some other senior staff in NNSA headquarters are accountable for this. So, hopefully, it's, it's going to be good, not just sound good, but we have senior people here accountable for making sure it happens, and that's, that's all the assurance I can give you today, but we'll be working it over the next few months. And I think the MOU is where we're going to try to address all these issues that aren't necessarily captured by a contract change. It's really, it's really how we're going to work together in the future to make sure all the operations at Lanal are the best they can be.
And, and you are correct, there is newly generated waste, and it will be generated into the future, and there will be an interface point there.
Thank you. That kind of brings up a point, and, you know, the, looking at developing, developing this MOU in the next few months, is it possible to present to the board here some of the considerations that you're looking at in this MOU so that we, we have a little better understanding of how this transition's going to work? And I, I think that's what we're looking at, is how, how, to smooth this out and see how it's going to do. And if you could do that with us, I think that would give us a better understanding of how the, you know, the association and the transition, and if it could be a presentation. I know we have a meeting in January, I don't know if that's too quick, but also in March.
You can certainly be there and give the whole information about it.
That would be extremely helpful. Thank you. And let's see where he, oh, Allison, that's another question, okay.
It's about the MOU as well. I, I really want to thank you, Kim and Jack and Pete, for letting us in on what's going on at a relatively early stage in terms of the MOU. And my prediction with the CAB is, as we begin to digest a lot of this information, we'll start wanting to come up with opinions and recommendations, and we'll wonder if that's appropriate to share those with the body that's developing the MOU. And to do that, we need to know a couple of things. What are the exact timeframes for the development, finalization, and signing of the MOU? Is it appropriate for us to attempt to weigh in on the MOU, given our very preliminary understanding of it? As far as I've got it, it kind of will govern the bridge period and the things that aren't covered in the contract for the bridge period, and perhaps broadly, set some expectations for those five-year contracts. But the best synopsis of the MOU's purpose will help us as a body as we discuss our, our thoughts on behalf of the public that we represent, our, the best understanding of what that MOU is for, and when it would be appropriate to possibly weigh in on it would help us be of more value to you.
Well, certainly, we want your involvement and ideas. Our schedule, I think our target is to have the MOU done by the end of February. So, knowing that we have to, our goal is to have it done by then, we certainly have some, should have something to talk with you about in January. So, that, that would be our intent. But I don't see any reason why not, so, I mean, I'd put on the agenda and force us into coming and, and having something. That'd help us with our schedule.
Are the three of you the key signatories, or who actually signs off on the MOU between EM and NSA?
I, I believe it'll be Kim as the NNSA rep, and probably Mark Whitney as our acting assistant secretary.
And I just do what they tell me to do, so, and I do it, and I do it happily, so.
Okay.
I thank you for sharing that with us, Jack, and that we appreciate that, that could, you know, that we get the information at this meeting coming up.